Morning.
Morning, how's it going?
Great so far.
Good.
It's official.
It's official.
Sirens go off, it's nine o'clock. Is that a sign we've been doing this too long?
I figured it was official that you were great, you know, because you said it right after that, so.
You, you are the only person in the building with that opinion.
We'll call our Marshall County Board of Supervisors Special Session Meeting to order on April fourteenth, twenty fifteen, at nine AM. In meeting room, uh, special meeting, meeting room two northeast corner, third floor with all three members present. First item is the approval or amendment of the agenda that was presented.
I motion that we approve the agenda as printed.
I second it. Got a motion and a second, roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda, that's agenda, approval of the minutes for special session marks thirty-one, twenty fifteen, and April two, April second, twenty fifteen, need a motion for this?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded, a discussion? Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Alright, moving on to item number three, uh, the Alliant Energy Plant Update, Ken, Mr. Ken Vincent is with us today and, and, uh, he'll give an update on the progress of the new Alliant plant, power plant, and good morning, Ken.
Good morning. Have to excuse me, my voice is a little shaky from cold, but, uh, if I can get, if I can get the mouths onto the, uh...
Is the siren bothering you? I mean, we turned the siren down.
Is that, I can't see, it's, I want to get it.
We've lost the mouse.
Bad, you know, I hate it when that happens. That last time was eighty-six when that happened. Rather it took them fourteen, fifty years to find it.
On the plant, uh, got some texts here I'd like to cover first, and then I have just a brief PowerPoint, just to kinda show you where we have been and where we're going, so. Uh, and I have several pictures in there that we'll, I'll discuss when we get to them, but, uh, uh, first thing on every agenda, every meeting we have, we talk about safety. And to date, safety has been very, very good out there. There have been just a very, very few, uh, minor first aid cases, uh, summer things going pretty well, as far as that's concerned. We're making very good progress on the construction. There's, uh, probably over a hundred fifty workers on the site right now, and they add about twenty-five per week. The working hours are six thirty AM to five thirty PM, Monday through Saturday. Uh, they might vary just a little bit, but they're working, uh, overtime to, uh, to maintain the schedule. Uh, and with that kind of a schedule, I kinda would recommend that you avoid the area of Eighteenth Avenue and east of Veda Street during the early morning rush hour at six thirty AM, and then at five thirty PM when the workers get off. Uh, now, there has been a, uh, I think it's been installed, but there was, the city was going to be installing the traffic control signal there, uh, stoplight, and, uh, that will be helpful in, uh, controlling traffic coming in.
Is that gonna be on Nevada there, Nevada?
At the intersection of.
Nevada, eighteen.
And that should be done by now. Uh, the main foundations on the ground for the steam turbine generator, the two combustion turbines, and the, the heat stea-, uh, heat recovery steam generators, they've all been completed, all that concrete work has been done. Four of the eight columns for the steam turbine tabletop, which I'll show you a picture of that. Uh, that's been poured, these are continuous pours, they just keep going and going and going. Some of them take about twenty-two to twenty-four hours to pour, and they just keep going. And, uh, the other four columns, they're working on forming those up right now, and sometime in the future they'll pour those. So all the main, uh, ground type foundations will have been poured.
So do they have their own, own, uh, concrete plant out there?
No, no, it's, uh, Concrete Incorporated is, is the main supplier of the concrete, plus Manance, uh, out of Tama, so the local contractors make the use of it. Uh, there's other concrete work taking place such as, uh, uh, what we call pile caps, and I'll show you a picture of those. About last week, uh, well, actually, last March, March last month, there was over five thousand cubic yards of concrete that was poured, so that's quite a bit of concrete. Phase two of the circulating water piping installation from the plant to the cooling tower is underway. Uh, those are very large pipes, uh, I've got a picture of that. Uh, work continues on electric duct bag, another underground work in the power block area and the sewer system. About eighty percent of the underground work in that power block area has been completed. There's a lot of material and equipment that has started to arrive by truck. Uh, and in regards to some of the heavy equipment, a crane will be installed over the rail siding that is there, and that's where, uh, I'll be using a little material and equipment, uh, that arrives by rail. There are four, um, we call them gold hofer, or gold hofer, uh, crawlers. They have multiple tires on it, and a remotely controlled guy stands there, puts the heavy equipment on it, and then it crawls over to where we can store it or put it in place. I have photos of that, too. Um, we have many more construction traders, uh, I have a picture of an aerial photo. Uh, but since that aerial photo, we've had, uh, many more construction traders for the workers and for, for the, the contractors installed, so. Site looks like a small city, it really does, it's really busy, really busy. I wanted to give you some weights of some of the equipment. Uh, there are three generators, and each one of those weighs about five hundred sixty-five thousand pounds. Uh, they come fully assembled, and they'll be here by rail. Uh, combustion turbines, there'll be two of those, and they weigh five hundred eight thousand pounds, they come fully assembled by rail. The steam turbine generator steam drum, which sits on top of the plant, uh, five hundred, or two hundred fifty-six thousand pounds comes by rail. The air intakes, uh, if you remember the video, uh, it shows a picture of the air intakes on the front of the, front of the plant, there are two of those, and those come in pieces, but the total weight of those is about four hundred fifty thousand pounds. And then the condenser, it comes in pieces by rail, too. About four pieces, and that's, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand pounds, so. A lot of heavy equipment will be coming in here shortly, and it starts coming in probably sometime in May, June timeframe. Uh, as far as the pipeline's concerned, uh, all the permits for the construction have been received. The contractor is going to be remobilized in mid-April, which is tomorrow, and, uh, he will have between three hundred to three hundred fifty workers doing the construction. Construction could start sometime in April, weather permitting, and then, uh, complete again, weather permitting, permitting in July, August timeframe. Uh, so thirteen and a half miles comes, and I've got a photo of a, an aerial, I can show you the route. Um, I think last time I talked, I said we had one, uh, rail car of pipe for the pipeline that was stuck in Little Rock, Arkansas, and that has now arrived. It's at the site, at some of the station where we start at. And then, uh, just so you know, uh, we have other material and station areas for the equipment that is on the east side of the river, just off Main Street. And, uh, that's where there, there'll be a lot of traffic at that, at that point also during construction of the pipeline. We received excellent cooperation throughout all this process so far from both the city and the county. Uh, the traffic signals, uh, we met with emergency personnel. G I S helped us make a map for the emergency response plan, for the evacuation routes. We met with an emergency plan and, uh, some of the other people, uh, recently. All the sirens, uh, coordinate that, so, uh, appreciate it very much for what, uh, what you've done, so. Now, I've got this, uh, PowerPoint on show. Uh, these are just some interesting facts, uh. I don't, I've never shown this to you before, but there'd be twenty-seven thousand cubic yards of concrete will be used, and that's enough to pave a two lane, five point mile highway.
This better? Okay, sorry. Uh, four thousand tons of steel will be used, this is equivalent to two hundred, or twenty-two hundred cars. Uh, ninety-three thousand linear feet of pipe, that's enough to, uh, connect Marshalltown to Tama. Uh, one point three, one point four million linear feet of cable. Uh, this is enough to, uh, run wire from Davenport to Council Bluffs, and then one point two million construction hours. Uh, the guy that wrote this up thought that was kinda cute, if one person were to work that many hours, it would take him five hundred seventy-seven years. And then the last one, I'm not even gonna comment on it, because nobody gets it, so. Uh, this again is just a schematic overhead of the site, this is where it is. This is, uh, the road coming into it, this is main lying Union Pacific. Existing Sullivan Station, East Main Street, and that gives you an idea of where it's at. It's all above the five hundred year floodplain, this indicates the floodplain, if you can see it going down through here. And this is, this is above the five hundred year floodplain. Again, this is what it's, uh, supposedly gonna look like, uh, very, very close. We're not quite sure of the colors yet, and, uh, the stormwater pond that's, is, is shown right here actually is located a little bit different location from there, but, uh, very, very close to how this thing will look. This is an early aerial photo, you can just give you an idea of the, the size of the footprint. This was after a very extreme, uh, downpour, so, uh, the stormwater detention pond that I, I mentioned is up, is down here. It was full, so. Here, here's a, a most recent, this was taken March ninth. Uh, since that time, this area right in here is full of trailers. So, uh, and then there are actually more trailers up in this area. This is a fabrication area, uh, these are construction trailers for the employees. Uh, this is the first combustion turbine site, this is number two, and this is where the steam turbine will set, these are the four columns that I mentioned that have been poured, and this happened to be, um, just before they did pour those. It just shows four of the eight columns that are, have been, uh, have been formed up and ready to go. This is the back of, uh, one of the steam turbines where the heat recovery steam generator is. Those bolts, you look at them, they're in a circular pattern, and that's where the stack will set for that particular steam turbine and HERSIC. So, um, that, that's kinda interesting, uh, to see the, the concrete and everything that's associated with it. This is a picture of the pour, there were, uh, two of these, uh, pumpers. One was just in, in standby mode in case the first one broke down, and you can see that they're pouring these four columns. You can see who the contractor is right there. Here's where they're forming up the remaining four out of the eight columns. On top of this will be, uh, another foundation, and then the steam turbine and its associated generator will set on top of that. So it's gonna be actually a story above the, uh, the combustion turbines. Uh, just gives you an idea how much rebar is associated with each of those columns, it's just a, it's just a maze. This is what I, uh, uh, called a pile cap. Uh, there are, uh, pilings that have been driven, and then this is over the top of that. Uh, probably will be structural steel that will, will set on top of that, because there are bolts sticking out of the top. I couldn't get this aligned properly in the PowerPoint, you'd see the bolts if I, if I had it right. So, they're basically foundations for the structural steel that will be for the building and, and surrounding the, uh, heat recovery steam generators. This shows some of the, the piping that will be used, the duct back, bank, and then, again, here's some more pile caps, and then you can see the, the bolts on top of them. Uh, this is the, the, uh, phase two of the circulating water pipe that comes out of the plant, and goes over to where the cooling tower will be, the cooling tower will be approximately where that pickup sits in the back. But this, uh, they go from like seventy-two inches up to ninety inches somewhere in this area. Very, very large pipes. These are the, uh, gold hoifers I talked to you about, they're multiple tires, uh, I think there are four of them on there. Here's another picture of, uh, the drivetrain, uh, controls and so forth, a guy will probably just stand next to it and use it remotely. And I think that might be the last. Okay, natural gas, this again is the route. Extreme northeast part of the county touches, uh, or connects to Northern Border Pipeline and runs diagonally down past Green Mountain and then into the plant. Uh, this just shows the pipe, it's all, this was when it was, uh, in the yard. Uh, there are actually more than twenty-seven cars, there are thirty-eight cars that were brought in for, uh, for full pipe. And it just, this just shows the area out at Sullivan Station, the old coal pile, coal yard, this is how they unloaded it, and where it actually resides until they start construction. And that would be it. What do you have for questions for me?
Let's talk natural gas for a minute.
Okay.
Um, we've received some inquiries from a gentleman that is questioning on the state of Iowa whether we have adequate natural gas coming in distribution wise to be able to expand our existing industry that we currently have and/or new industry. Did Alliant find any problems with the ability for the amount of natural gas you need to generate this coming in?
To my knowledge, there's no issues with, uh, the available supply. The supply comes from Northern Border Pipeline, which comes down through Canada, through the Dakotas, uh, probably Wyoming, I'm not sure of the exact route as far as going north, but very adequate supply. Uh, this line is being built twenty inches, but the actual capacity that's needed by the plant is sixteen inches. So the volume, there's extra volume that can be used, uh, if it's necessary, if it's needed for, uh, industrial growth here or just, just growth in the Marshalltown area.
Okay, uh, and I, and I know you're not connected with medic anymore, but in your, in your memory bank, do you remember this being an issue in economic development before?
Natural gas?
Yeah, the, the amount coming into the state and the size of the pipelines in, in a relationship to be able to expand existing industry.
There are, there are two pipelines that serve this area, uh, we're tapping Northern Border for this. The city of Marshalltown, uh, is actually on Northern Natural, which is an east-west pipeline that goes through Ames and on over to the eastern part of the state. Uh, there are two border stations here, and there were issues at one time about the supply of gas there. Those are pretty much resolved, uh, they've built some additional pipeline capacity over in the Ames area to supply DuPont, that new facility over there. So, uh, this plant won't tap the Northern Natural, won't put any more stress on that, but, uh, you know, there, there, at one point in time, there probably were some issues, but I think a lot of those have been kinda resolved.
Okay, it was just, we had been approached by, by an individual that wanted us to take the position, and we certainly didn't have an answer.
So what position would we take on that, 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 that was there? Where they're cutting down our, our economic growth, correct?
Yeah.
If, if.
Was it in opposition to this power plant?
No.
No.
It was, uh,
A concern.
That, that there wasn't adequate supplies coming into the state of Iowa for us to be able to do economic development in any of our counties, and asking us to be behind a push to increase the amount of, of capacity that was coming into the state and then have feeder lines coming off of that. Uh, basically, it got down to the point where this, this individual states we will not be able to get any major uh, manufacturing concerns or anything else coming into our state, even if we have the available manpower of, of people to be able to, uh, take care of the jobs, if we can't supply the natural gas to run the facilities that want to, uh, support those jobs.
Okay, I understand that, and it might be that there are certain areas of the state where the capacity's not there. I don't know that, I'd hate to be quoted on that, but I could certainly inquire, uh, if there are any issues in this particular area.
I don't think it's gonna be a legislative thing this year, but it kinda looks like when they start asking questions like this, it's a year off before, they'll probably have something before the legislature next year.
Well, there is quite a bit of option, op- upper, or opposition, I would say, to two pipelines and, and power lines, major power lines, if you know, Rock, uh, the Rock Island Clean Line. That's a major direct voltage line that, uh, they, we'd like to build from northwest Iowa all the way into the Chicago area. A lot of opus, opposition there, imminent domain. Uh, there's a pipeline, uh, that, uh, I think it's a, it's an oil pipeline that want, they wanna go through Iowa, and I don't know, that's an issue, too. This has not been an issue, this pipeline that, uh, was issued by the I U B permits and everything, that went very smooth. But I think a lot of it was because all the landowners were treated very fair.
Yeah, and I don't mean to put you on the spot this morning, but I figured you'd have the answer.
We can check it out, we can.
Yeah, I was gonna check with Debbie Durham, too.
Yeah.
But I think, I think that it was in concern of somebody trying to create a ruckus on something.
Yes.
That, as, as, as an eight sayers will always do, trying to say that this, it would stunt our economic growth, because we don't have the capabilities of supplying.
But it was the first I'd heard of it.
Yeah, we, we'd never heard of it before, but.
Well, it certainly isn't like it was in the seventies.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Looking forward to, are they taking, uh, pictures of that as it's going up? You know, kinda like?
Yes, I am, I have a camera passed, and I'm taking photos.
You're just, you're just kinda, I'd, it'd be, it'd be fun seeing that thing as a camera, you know, I, I.
Uh, my mention that they are, uh, we are going to be installing an overhead camera, construction camera, uh, in one location that will be able to pan out and zoom in and so forth, to take, uh...
See how it grows, I guess. Because that three D thing that you, you, we've seen a lot, many times, that, that's really something, how they put that together, huh?
It would be like that.
No, I, I, I just thought that'd be neat, but thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Ken, very good.
Jill, are you ready for this? I tell you what, I'm just gonna give you my mic, and you can just sit there if you want to.
Thanks, yeah, I don't have any PowerPoint.
No PowerPoint? Aw, geez.
My goodness, I guess, no, I could've.
We like pictures.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, should've known.
You're not gonna sing, are you?
No, I'm not gonna sing. Well, you're gonna use that.
I would just kinda.
I thought we can share. Julie, you're with us today, Community Service Director. I'm gonna hear a little bit of a departmental take from you, so.
Thanks.
Jill, take it away.
Thanks for the opportunity to meet with you, I know the one thing that precipitated this meeting was, um, some discussion of a current twenty-eight E agreement that we have with Central Iowa Recovery. So I thought I would just start with that, kinda get some questions out of the way, and then we can talk about some other things. So, it was, um, the twenty-eight E agreement was signed in, what year was that? Two thousand and twelve, um, for the creation of Central Iowa Recovery, an intensive psychiatric rehabilitation project. That was done by ten counties at the time, I think, but it was not just our Central Iowa Community Services region, it included another region, and we've since expanded a little bit more. Um, the board members, our board of supervisors members or community services director members, depending on how the boards, the member boards have appointed those. Bill Sitz on it, Dean Adams did previously, and I've sat as an alternate during this entire time. So, one of the things that, um, has come up as we have, uh, expanded, we expanded into Polk County, Central Iowa Recovery has, um, and they're also in Green, Guthrie, and Audubon, as well as our ten county region that we fully serve. One of the reasons that we did that as a twenty-eight E agreement was because, um, it was a service that we needed, and we didn't have a provider that really was willing to look at this service and implement it and get it up going. So I think you remember you, um, voted to, um, put in twenty-five thousand dollars per county at the time, and, um, and that has been very successful. It's been a, it's been a great, um, business to work with, it's been fun to be involved with, go ahead, David.
Did all the other counties that have also came in that are not within our region also put in twenty-five thousand?
The Green, Guthrie, Audubon did, as, as one, I think it was just one of theirs that joined, the others, they're kinda sharing some staff, they didn't get one staff per county. Polk County did not, they came in, um, we're gonna serve them, we did not ask them to be a member. So it's kind of a, um, it's a Medicaid funded service for the most part, we have some county funded individuals, but it was where we were at in Madison County and Warren County, and then Powashik and stuff. It allowed us, by expanding into Polk County, to put a supervisor, an additional supervisor in that part of the state and still cover more counties, so it was kind of at the, um, request of the, um, director and the board decision to add Polk County, but not as a member. So we still run the program, the twenty-eight E board that does not include Polk County runs the program.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, as we've gone through, there's been, um, like I said, it's been very successful. One of the things that we really wanted to happen was, we needed them to serve the people that we, we needed served and not have an agency that wouldn't, um, maybe accept that person or whatever. That's been very successful, and, um, the company has grown. And so we, you know, keep looking at what's the future of this. We've gone from being, having one of the counties be the fiscal agent, to a year or so ago, we moved to having Central Iowa Juvenile Detention do the fiscal agent, um, work for this company. That was a smooth transition and very good. So we're just looking at the future, and, and we're, we're feeling like the future, the board, putting on my Central Iowa Recovery hat, board now, board member now hat, is that to move into a five oh one C three from the twenty-eight E agreement would allow them to branch off and maybe expand as they need to and to possibly get other grants and things that they're not allowed to get under the twenty-eight E agreement. I think that, um, to, so what we do, we kinda started up a company, and then we're gonna let them move into be their own company, is kind of what we're looking at.
That's the five oh one C three is nonprofit, which does allow you to apply for grants.
Would allow them to do that, yes.
As you just said.
Yeah.
Why can't you do both? We, we do it at Juvenile Detention in Eldora.
Do the grants and stuff.
We, we have a twenty-eight E agreement with all our member counties, and we're a five oh one C three. You should be able, you should be able to go down that road with both entities.
And I'm not.
Pairing alongside of each other.
We're working with, uh, uh, the attorney, Galloway, on that.
Yeah, Michael, okay.
Yes, and so this is what he's, I wasn't in on those meetings, but this is what he's recommended for the company. And I don't know, and I don't, I'm not sure the reasons for not both, it's not a done deal yet, I'm just giving you an update of, of the transition proposal. And so what the proposal currently, um, is that, that the board would approve a transition plan and the resolution presented to the C I R, um, member counties, and then they would ask, if we go down that route, they would ask that, um, the counties agreed to end the twenty-eight E, and would move to the five oh one C three and create a transition board. So it would still have board members on, so. I'd be glad to take questions back as to why that wouldn't work to be both, I'm not sure.
I guess I'll, one of the questions, when we went into region, within, in the twenty-eight E agreement, Arkansas, Marshall County's concern was the Mid-Ohio Workshop, which no other, no other really county, city involved in this twenty-eight E agreement has. How would going from a twenty-eight E to a five oh one C three?
Two different things, we're talking Central Iowa Recovery, and then we're talking Central Iowa Community Services. So right now, we're just talking Central Iowa Recovery.
Okay.
So Central Iowa Recovery is just a, a small multi-can, multi-region, um, agency to provide central, uh, intensive psychiatric rehabilitation.
Okay.
So just talking about that now, and then we're moving to Central Iowa, uh, Community Services, yep.
If you go to a five oh one C three, are all of the members that contributed the twenty-five thousand dollars going to be on that decision-making body? Or is it going to be a smaller group, including some of the counties that may not have contributed the twenty-five thousand?
Um, at this point, the recommendation for the transition plan is to establish a, a board at five to seven members, and I believe we, um, voted for five members to create a transition board from existing members. And then after that, it would be a new, um, board after the transition board, once it moved into that. I don't know if we would have the input as to who was on that.
Okay.
Might have, I don't know.
And, and where I'm going for, with this is, is from, from day one, we had drastic concerns about the amount of funds that we took into this group, uh, not only into the region, uh, that money that was appropriated or came out of Marshall County taxpayers' pockets was benefiting other counties and areas.
You're talking Central Iowa Community Services.
I understand.
We're only talking Central Iowa Recovery now.
Yep. Yep.
So let's, let's finish Central Iowa Recovery.
Okay.
So we're in the middle of a transition plan recommended by, um, the Mike Galloway, the attorney that they've hired. That we, the twenty eight E board for, Bill has hired for the transition plan of Central Iowa Recovery. So what you might see next then is a twenty eight E proposal that you would either, you know, get out of that twenty eight E agreement. Possibly, possibly not, I don't know where that transition is gonna go, but that's the update on that. So you don't have anything in front of you to act on for Central Iowa Recovery yet. The information is, is there's some talk going of moving that from a twenty eight E to a five oh one C three.
Yep, one of the things I was wondering about, and since I'm the new guy, I'm trying to get my arms around all this. But, um, um, when, um, uh, the twenty eight E agreement was created. That is, it talked about the accounts of the, of, of, uh, C I R shall be audited and verified by a certified public accountant. Uh, within a hundred and fifty days of each physical year. Should, are we gonna have a, an audit before we go from, from, uh, our twenty eight E agreement? And we drop that and go in?
Definitely think that should be a part of the transition plan.
No one has said anything.
Yeah, I would definitely think that should be a part of the transition plan.
And, and they were talking about trying to get this done by June.
Yeah, they were.
Um, I'm not sure we can even find, get the audit done by June.
That, that was pretty aggressive, the June timeline, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I guess that, that's one of the things I was concerned about. Um, and, um, it talks about, um, you know, if, if it, if it. If it stops, the twenty eight E agreement was saying that we needed to, to divide the money up. Now, we didn't talk about that at our meeting, but it's in the twenty eight E agreement.
It was talked about, um, in regards to, um, trying to see. Allocate the startup funds to C I R, uh, under the transition steps. And that is probably one of the things, because in the, in the twenty eight E for Central Iowa Recovery, it talks about if they would cease business. The counties would get the money back, um, equal shares of what they had put in or whatever.
Whatever there is, yeah.
But that's probably one of the things that will be asked in the twenty eight E revision as you opt out, if you do opt out of the twenty eight E agreement. And that's to not ask for your money back, because the company is gonna continue and we want the company to continue. It's just, um, we're moving it from a twenty eight E to a five oh one C three, so it's not the same as them ceasing business and giving your money back.
Cause that was gonna be my next question, if we take our, everybody takes the twenty five thousand dollars back, what kind of working capital do you have?
They probably wouldn't have enough. So.
So if you would, if you would form, kinda what, what he's talking about, if you would form a, uh, the five oh one C three. And have, as he says, have both. There wouldn't be any, they could, they could still continue business with, with the board of directors or the, the twenty eight E. And then create another five oh one C three.
Certainly something to, to toss out, to do once.
Wouldn't that be less complicated?
Yeah, where I'm really having, struggling with this a little bit, and it's probably because I may not know enough. But the, and you correct me if I'm wrong, we've got four counties that are sharing in the services that are provided by Central Iowa Recovery. So they're getting a benefit from that, but they're not members and they haven't put any money in.
Well, yes, but sometimes it benefits us because we can put a staff in the area or whatever to, um, have full caseloads or whatever. So sometimes that's a benefit to us to be able to have the staff, I mean, it's, it's kind of a, um.
Okay.
I, I know where you're coming from.
And if that's, if that's the.
But it's not, it's, it's more to the benefit of the company than the benefit of the county, I mean, it benefited the company to put somebody, um, staff in Polk County. And a supervisor in that part of the state to cover the counties that were member counties and stuff, the member counties still come first.
Okay, but if that's the case, I wanna make darn sure when we go into this, that down the road, we don't have the great state of Polk County not having any skin in the game. But somehow having a seat at the table, being able to say what's going on, along with these other three counties that don't have that proverbial skin in the game.
It would just be the two other counties and that was, that's just a very small group, but, yeah.
Does that generate revenue for the twenty eight E?
Yes, mhm.
So that, that would be the, the.
It does generate revenue, yes.
They, they.
And it keeps them viable, yep, it's, it's all, you know, to serve the people and keep the business viable.
Is the business viable at this point?
Yes, it is.
It's covering all its costs with income coming in and not going in the hole?
Well, I mean, there's been a, a few months of different losses, but they had enough built up and there's been different reasons for the losses. But, um, they haven't come back to the member counties and asked for any additional funds.
Okay.
See, that, that, I guess that's our concern too.
As well would be mine.
You know, that, that we don't get, you know, asked to contribute more, even going into this, we were.
Yep.
So at the point that this comes down through, I mean, this is really preliminary, we just got it last month, the transition, you know, start of the transition plan. And so, like I said, the next thing you'll see is a twenty eight E agreement that will spell out that other stuff and, and see, and we'll ask those other questions as to why we would need to terminate the one to do the other. Good questions, but we can do that.
Yeah, I'd like to see, see, when you and Bill go to this next meeting for that to be brought up as to why you can't go down the road both as a twenty eight E agree, agreement entity and a five oh one C three.
Yeah, and also maybe even before that meeting so that they can, you know, try to get some of those answers.
Because that's exactly what we do at Juvenile Detention in Eldora.
I was, I was just, I was just.
We're both entities.
Yeah, I, I was concerned about this whole, this whole thing. Um, back, back to our money and, and that is successful financially. Has there been a, has there been a new, uh, treasurer's report with the council receivable line added to that yet?
Not since you asked for that, and I don't think, we haven't missed anything since you've asked for that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I tried to catch the computer to be sure there isn't.
Yeah, no, there has not been one, I think there's a meeting coming up, but there has not been.
It, it really bothered me, cause I, I came in there in January and, and we haven't made any money since about October.
It's true, and it, that was during that expansion and, and traditionally through the last couple of years, anytime we've added staff. You have a couple of week training period, that's a pretty intensive training period, and until they get up and going and billing, you do, you are down. But I echo your same concerns.
Mhm.
So.
Well, um, I, I would, I'd like to see that, be sure that that is really making money before we start changing. You know, our, our, our twenty eight E over to a five oh one C three. But, but again, on the, on the other side, I don't, I know less about it than you do, but it sounds like maybe if we went to five oh one C three. Now, now we're entitled to apply for some grants, receive grants, which would then update or increase our revenue or on the general fund. But there again, I don't know why, I think about, we'll find out after that valid question, why can't we be both, twenty eight E and five oh one C three?
It's tough, we've gotta wear two hats, we wanna be a portion of the group, but we also are responsible to the taxpayers of Marshall County.
I, I totally agree.
So this is one of these weird, and we knew this getting into this, that this day was gonna come.
Yeah.
But this is a weird situation.
We talked about it in the car coming home, it, it's, it is hard to.
It's hard to remember which hat you have on sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just glad you're, you got the, you got the hat that you can't see.
We remember our hats all the time, they're the pointed ones.
Jill, Jill does a good job.
So, update on C I R, we'll just, you'll have more information soon, so, just wanted to kinda let you know what was, what was being discussed there. The regional stuff is going really well, um, you know, we've got our ten county region, that hasn't changed since the beginning. We're, you know, ten counties strong and I feel doing some really good things, we're working well together. Think the board, um, the twenty eight E board is working well together, got our administration team under that, that is the community services directors of the counties. And, you know, we tried to do some stuff, make recommendation up to the twenty eight E board, get any questions answered. Working to implement some new core services in counties and things, so, um, I would be open to any questions you have there.
I guess I, I guess, okay, I'm, I'm gonna stop and ask that question.
Okay.
So, our twenty eight E agreement and, and the five oh one C three does not include this?
No.
No.
This will remain a twenty eight E agreement, yep, so.
I, I get lost in the shuffle.
Yep, this is Central Iowa Community Services, this is our ten county region for mental health disability services.
We went into this with substantial money, uh, some of the other counties didn't, and now I've seen after two short years, almost three. That we've reduced our levy.
We have.
You know, we started out where our levy was at fifty four.
Went to forty seven, twenty eight.
Then to forty seven, twenty eight, now we're down to thirty, thirty three. Do you anticipate any future changes in that?
Depends on what, um, the legislature does, um, that was the region's first attempt to try to equalize some levies. We still have two counties that are in the twenties, everybody else is at that thirty three, eighteen, thirty three, nineteen, whichever. Um, so we have eight counties that that levy for fiscal year sixteen and then two, those other two by law can't raise. Um, and our budget was sent, um, set with no state money for fiscal year sixteen and we were able to lower those levies. Now, we did that to try to get into the, the regional, um, thing, you know, if you will. And to, to be one, and so we didn't have such a disparity again of counties that had, were still levying a lot, counties that weren't levying a lot. Um, we set our budget, we've still got money at that point to, um, fund some projects and things. We're currently funding a supported employment project with, in every county to, that's just been a struggle to get supported employment going. And we're putting a lot of money into it and we're seeing some good results. But that's something that's, you know, we're just putting money into it to get those results to happen, and that's what we've been asked to do by the state, so, and we're doing it and we want to do it. So, so some of those things are gonna cost some money, we put a lot of money into the budget next year for some core services and, um, different things coming up, so.
And like Denny asked a little earlier, when we were on the, Central Iowa Recovery, now we're back on this. Have we had any pushback from these other counties because we do have a workshop here?
No, not per se, Mid High Workshop is one of the grants, um, for supported employment, so we're funding their grant program for supported employment. They were able to hire, um, Bill Marques, and he's doing a great job there for the supported employment program. So I think we're all working, you know, together on that.
Okay.
Nothing is in the works to change at this time, um, it's always a concern statewide and federal wide, um, for viability of, of workshops, but we keep working on that.
And if I remember right, the, one of the other two counties that was way below the thirty three, Powashieke was at about twenty three dollars. What was the other one?
Warren.
Warren, do you remember what they were at?
They're both within twenty two, twenty three dollars, I think.
Okay.
I can get you those numbers.
That's close enough.
Has, has this taken a burden off of your office by going regionalization on this or, that smirk that's actually added more?
I'm sorry, it hasn't, yeah.
Was it supposed to, was it attended to?
Um, you know, nobody really knew, we've kind of, what we've done is we've, um, specialized into areas. Which partially is, is helping instead of having to do a little bit of everything, we're specializing, uh, specializing into areas. We have operations to kinda do planning, compliance, um, I'm finance and we have service coordination and so, or service management. So I'm, I'm finance and so I'm doing the claims team, we're starting to pay claims regionally July first. So I have three people under me, including Linda in my office, to do claims. And, uh, we're gonna be paying claims out of one county instead of ten counties come July first. So it's a big project I'm taking over, you know, and so there's just always something new, the, the report, the financial reports that we do every month for the board. Um, I'm in charge of those, but I have to get all the information from the other ten counties, so, um, I'm not doing some of the. Maybe some of the other stuff that I did, but then I'm doing more of the others, so it, it's just, it's different, but I certainly haven't found any extra time.
Okay.
But again, just, just far, far as the history goes, we wanted to form our own, uh, region rather than be appointed to a region, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, gosh, yes.
That was a reason, yeah.
Yeah, we wanted to pick our dance partners.
Yeah.
And, and it really has been a, a good, good region, I mean, it's been, um, I think the, the governing board are committed to this region and I think that, I think it's working well.
Okay, let's take that step one past the next question then. If we haven't reduced any burden off of you, we formed this region, are we more efficiently spending the dollars? And are we giving a better service because we formed the region? Has our level of service improved?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay. Then a really stupid question. What did we gain?
The legislature made us do this.
I know it.
I was gonna say, it was gonna be, it was gonna be passed now.
The great state of.
I mean, and we're making it work, I mean, that's all I can say is, is, you know, we didn't have a choice and so we're just making it work.
I know.
Um, you know, I, I, but the, the things that I think the region is able to do is some of the projects and stuff. That would've been hard to fund with just one county, and that was because of the funding formula changes where you had the, the peaks and valleys. You know, you'd get an influx of money and then you have nothing and, and you can't fund a project if you can't continue it next year sometimes. And so with the region, we've got that, um, it's just a bigger insurance pool, if you will, to fund the projects that need to be funded. And that's a really good thing that we're able to do by ourselves, so.
So our, our year to date here on our, on our financial thing, we've got five point eight million. And so we're, we're running quite a little money through this service then, over a period of, of, of a year then. And so is that money that normally would used to come through, go through Marshall County?
Right now, we're paying, those are all combined bills for the ten counties, we're just lumping them in to say how much the ten counties spent last month. But then next, af- after July, all the service claims, so like for Mid High Workshop, for different things that we're actually paying services for people. Will go through our fiscal agent, which is Madison County, and that's the ones that I'm heading up the claims. You still pay your administration claims, your service coordination and stuff through your local counties. So you, we'll still have some claims coming through here, but not the volume that we've had.
So we are, okay, going back to your question, the end result is, it is kinda showing that it's saving the county.
Yes, not only that, but we've reduced our levy from fifty four dollars.
So it is working.
Down to thirty three, so there has been a gain from a financial perspective.
There has been, yep.
Yeah.
From a financial perspective, there has been, yes.
Right. But our, our true meaning by the state to do this was to offer better services and that.
Well, the better services, um, you know, I mean, will come with time and that's with, as we look at core services, getting crisis services implemented. We've already, you know, branched out and done, um, our transportation with the sheriff's office.
Big time.
You know, that's been huge, we did that as a region. So, so there, you know, there has been some gains that have probably made services better for people, so when I said no.
What other counties within our region is utilizing, uh, juvenile detention for transportation other than us? Cause when I saw our report off our board meeting last month, we were about ninety percent of what had been done.
We started first, so that report was, um, a little bit skewed, but this last, the February bill went to Story, Jasper. Uh, Boone and Madison, I think, they're all, I mean, we still have the most.
Okay.
At this point, um, but there are some other utilization and I think that will grow.
Are you getting good feedback from those other county sheriffs that were doing the transportation by themselves now and are utilizing juvenile detention?
I don't have that information.
Okay, if you do, let me know.
Okay.
Cause once again, I sit on that board also, so it's a different hat.
Yeah, I know, yeah, and I have not heard from them regarding good, bad.
Okay.
So I guess, and just kind of saying on that, we have, we have gained strides.
Oh, yeah.
And, and you know, in my, in my mind, anytime you inform a, I call it a business or a region, like I said, I guess I'd give you five years to get it straightened out. If you can't get it straightened out in five years, then you, then you kinda look at maybe different avenues, but it sounds like you guys are on, on the path of.
Oh, I haven't.
You know, on a, on a very, very, very good path.
I, I would agree.
Anything else?
There's just a lot of work to be done, is kind of my, there's just.
It's gonna be interesting to see after these first two initial years, where we're at two more years down the road. You know, the base has been placed now and, and now we're at the point where we can really start affecting some, some decent change. You know, the base has been placed now and, and now we're at the point where we can really start affecting some, some decent change. But once again, we're, we're fooling with, with the governor and the legislature, what they're gonna do on these institutions that are getting closed down. I mean, it seems as though every time we turn around, we have less beds available to be able to place individuals in. And it appears to me as they wanna go to more regional stuff, like we're doing. I haven't got it figured out, so if you've got it figured out, you let me know.
No, I mean, it is a concern as well as there's a Medicaid waiting list for the ID waiver spots. That went into effect in about October. And so we can't get anybody that comes through our system onto the ID waiver, which is our main funding stream for Cersei and different things throughout the community. And so at that point, we have to look at the individual and, you know, cover the, you know, health and safety crises and things. But those are a hundred percent regional dollars versus using federal Medicaid dollars. And so those are gonna, that's gonna put a crunch to us. So there's many concerns on that. And there's already five hundred people on that waiting list that was enacted in October, December.
That's just out of Marshall County or the region?
No, statewide.
Okay, statewide, okay.
Anything else? Do you? Do you have, got anything?
No more fun?
No.
Anything for us?
Yeah, no more fun.
No, I mean, I, I don't, I'll leave you with one of the brochures that we've done. We keep updating it and things. But one of the things we did do is our region is all on the Office three sixty-five suite. And so we are, we're connected through that. And so our email has changed from the county email to our regional email. And we're able to share files and stuff on that, on that Office three sixty-five. And so still getting some of the kinks worked out, but that's been really positive. That's where our website will be for the region and calendars and email, secure email and things. So we'll be moving away from the, or have moved away from the county email.
I can't think anything else right now.
Thank you.
Other, other than when, I, I wanna kind of stay close on, on our, our twenty-eighty agreement moving into this five oh one C three.
On the C I R, okay.
Yeah. It, just, just reading through this twenty-eighty agreement, there, there's things that we agreed to that I think we have to watch.
Okay.
So I appreciate your help on that.
Yeah, and I mean, there's, I don't know, I don't count how many counties there is in that, but you know, that'll come to each and every board. It'll be voted on by the twenty-eighty board and then back to each board, the supervisors that, that signed the twenty-eighty. So it's not gonna, not gonna get blindsided on that.
I can see if, if we abolish, it's gotta go back through us anyway.
Yep, absolutely, it is.
At that time.
It does absolutely come back to you.
Look at.
Yeah, it moves slow.
So.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Graham.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Jill. All right, moving on now to the next item, public forum. It's time set aside for the public to make comments and topics of county business other than those listed on this agenda. No action will be taken on any of these topics brought up in the public forum. Any public? Here it.
Everybody else is shaking their head, I'll shake mine too.
What's that? Any public forum, anything?
I don't have anything to say.
Next item on the agenda is the adjournment. Our next special session will be April twenty-eighth, twenty fifteen, at nine AM. All business reacted upon, at that session should be submitted to the county auditor recorder's office or the board of supervisors' office by Thursday, April twenty-third, twenty fifteen, at one PM. There may be no further, further business to come before the board. Our meeting is adjourned at nine fifty-three. Thank you. Awesome. We're good.